Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the April 7, 2022, meeting of the Dyton Public Library Board of Trustees. This meeting is a hybrid meeting being recorded on Zoom. All members of the trustees are present in the room. Does that mean we need still need to do a
Roll call?
Roll call? Okay. And so with that, I'll be meeting of the Dyton Public Library Trustees to order. Take a roll call. Ron O'Connor, Trustee's Chair.
Rita Arujio, trustee.
Justin Tavares, library director. And we have a guest.
So Mike Mullen, the town administrator.
Thank you. I don't have minutes.
All right, no minutes to be approved. Okay.
That will be table.
Okay, we are, could I have a motion to go into executive session?
I make a motion to go into executive session. Rita Arujio, I second.
So do we need to read the content?
Yes.
Maybe so. And making the motion, if you could just read what's here to go into executive session.
Under national laws, chapter 30A, section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public body.
Do we have a second motion?
Rita Arujio, second.
Okay, as Chair, I declare that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public body. So take a vote on the motion. Ron O'Connor, I.
Rita Arujio, I.
We're continuing the meeting after executive session of the Dyton Public Library Trustees. It is 6:56 PM. Okay. First item on the agenda here is strategic planning roadmap.
I need some of the changes that we had from the last meeting. And I tried to incorporate no longer relevant column that wasn't successful yet. But I don't know if you have found your priorities. Oh, I think you have this. That's my chicken scratch. I think it's the origin. All right, sorry. So I don't know if there were items that you wanted to move around.
Yeah, I, coming to the meeting, I felt it was important that we kind of regroup. And we're on, we're on a bit of a roll and I just want to make sure everybody's kind of recalling where we were.
Right.
Including me. So where did we leave off? And if you can, if you can help us with that, Jocelyn, that would be great.
We had gotten through some of fiscal 23. And what we did was we were ranking how we, we gave a one, two, three ranking where one was an item that we wanted to keep. And that there were two was like a maybe designation and three was no. And I I think no included some of, there are a few items on here that just aren't relevant to where we are now.
Yeah.
And probably even from last meeting, there are items that are not relevant to where we are now. So I'm I think I'm mostly concerned with finishing out this fiscal year and creating a plan for next fiscal year. It looks like we wanted to keep most of the items that were in fiscal 22, 22 and 23.
Yeah.
So I think moving on to 24 and 25 to make sure they're okay.
Okay.
If, or even if you wanted to go back and see if there were items that were no longer relevant. But it may.
Was it, is there a deadline associated with this in terms of?
Not.
MBLC?
Usually I think they usually like to see it in November, not November, December for action plans.
Okay.
But where we're so close to fiscal 23, there isn't like, we're kind of, I'm just trying to prioritize the strategic plan so that we can make use of it.
Yeah, so this is mainly for us.
Right, right.
Internal here. But also importantly, we look out to the out years.
Exactly. I, you know, I think, I think it's important to have a action plan for fiscal 24 to send them in December.
Okay. Fiscal 24.
Yeah.
Okay, then why don't we just start with fiscal year 24?
Okay.
Kind of go through those. Is that, does that make sense to folks? And I guess we'll go through the line, line by line.
Yeah.
And so we used a ranking process.
Keep maybe and now one, two, three.
Keep maybe, no.
And there are things that we can actually move to different years.
And then, then once we have this reorganized in that way, we can, we can take a first look at it. And just, you know, I think giving the strategic plan on our radar probably isn't a bad, a bad thing. So so revisiting it more frequently.
Yeah.
And we'll yeah, we'll need, we'll need to do that with the new trustee starting, starting next month anyway. So, okay. All right. Alright, so develop, promote and hold virtual career day. For folks think. Keep that.
Yeah.
Okay. Collaborate with Bristol Aggie for programming. I think it's a great idea. I think they know they've got, you know, that's a, yeah. Update the board trustee bylaws. Yeah.
Yeah.
Say, yeah, that's.
When was the last time they were updated?
It's been a little while, I think.
So.
Do you want that in a different year or? I think this is part of, that's like the first step in expanding the board. I think that's what that is.
Yeah. We, we had some activity related to I'm just trying to refresh my memory. Do we have anything prior, like, do we have anything in FY23 related to the size of the trustees, the board trustees?
No, I.
So this is the first time we, okay.
I still pushed it out.
Should we move it back to 23?
I I'm looking at I feel like we need to take the temperature of the town and its political situation.
Yeah.
And that's why I, it was more of a, when we did the strategic plan, we were working from home and we were like that's how this had done was, it was the summer of 2020 in a much different time.
Okay.
I, so when we were discussing it, it was much more focused, but a lot has changed since then and you know.
Yeah.
That's I.
Well, well, let's, I, I think.
I guess my question is, do you want to keep it in 24 or push it out to 25? Or wait and see.
Yeah, I think we'll wait and see.
You can always if you decide, push it out if you, you keep it now the way it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next few items are in the same boat.
So activity related to expanding the trustees will start working on that in FY24.
And it waiting, you know, what's not mentioned here is finding the individuals who would be a good board member.
Yeah, yeah, I can see. FY25 seems like a long way out, but it's not. And we've got a lot to do.
Yeah.
Already in the plan. So that's, that's good. So, so if we're all in agreement, this will be so if we can skip down then.
I guess the next one would be talking points.
Why a new library is preferable to an addition? Yeah, we can keep, keep that in and just, you know, see where, where we are in terms of the MBLC funding, et cetera. So.
Okay. And then the other piece that we have Rita, we, one of the findings from the strategic plan is that we wanted to create a group of library advocates and really kind of make them ambassadors for the library. And the next few points are related to that about what they will do, what their job, their job in quotes would be. Are we able to give them perks? Are we able to? How do we assemble that, that team of people who are going to carry our message? You know, just advocate for us. Yeah. Then that's in addition to the friends, in addition to this board. So it's all the work that is involved with that. And that's through on the second page, establish goals for ambassadors is the last.
So that that whole I was looking for. I'm jumping ahead just in terms of process, but I think let's just we believe that we won't go forward with that in FY25 makes sense. Would we, we don't need to answer this now, but I'm thinking this, this may be something where we want to use some of the state aid money for a consultant. It could work with you and kind of shaping this in a way that, so that you're not having to take the burden of all this. This is a, to, to be successful, this needs a lot of, a lot of time. You, you have, you kind of have the vision for this, Jocelyn. But may not have the time to make this work in FY25. So it would be good to have, to know that we could do that. So if we could add that, like, look into a consultant. Cause other, other libraries done this?
I think I am Wilmington has done it.
And maybe they, they have somebody that they use to help to make that happen again. It'd be a lot, but it would just be good to have somebody kind of working with you. To make that happen. Well, there it is. Investigate what other libraries are doing with ambassadors. So.
That was, was it in a different?
That's enough by 23.
Right, I think. Plan for the.
Yeah, okay. So, so we're already talking, I'm looking in the wrong column.
No, no.
So all right, so we're going to continue with that. And so the next item then in FY24 would be planned fundraising activities as needed. Folks want to keep that.
I don't think so.
A lot of while it seems near, it is far enough away than in FY23, we may say we're gonna do something different, but for now, in terms of our plan, and as you were saying, Jocelyn, this may be submitted the FY24 plan in December. So we can revisit that FY24 that time. I think maybe what we're doing here is this like something absolutely out or needs to be moved up and so fundraising policies as needed. Add, add space, you know, space is something that we'll want to be considering in FY24. So I don't see that that would be anything we want to move out. This is space issues that is not, I'm going to, I'm going to change. Let's see. I don't know what folks think about, you know, the, the rest of the items here in the strategic plan for FY24. Not sure we want to.
Just leave it for now.
Yeah.
Everything's up in the air.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, this is well thought out plan. I don't think we need to change anything there. Move into FY25? A youth friend group. That sounds like a great thing. Recruit high school or college.
This shows up twice. This is also in 23. So I don't know what I did. I apologize. So that, yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna just sort of assuming that that carries on.
Good catch. It's like one of those matching games. I didn't see that it matched anything. Establish a business center. What is, what does that mean?
That would be a reference area for people starting a business that would have like all those directories that people are looking for. Copying scanner, all that, all the tools that people might need to do their work. So that's what I was thinking, having just those resources. I think the town now has a business planning guide for how to get started in Diane. So to tie into that material and
Okay.
And so a lot of times we will refer people to the Kirsten Business Library in Boston at the BPL. So just beefing up some of the collection a little bit so people don't have to. I mean, it's there. It's, you know, kind of marrying that access to some local things and
Okay.
That I think was mine. Although it wasn't mine, it was in the plan. So I'll have to.
Yeah.
Go back and reference it.
So to the, to the town's planning guide, did, did that, is that new?
It's newish. I think it was developed within the last couple of years.
Okay.
Between the, maybe the town administrators, I think. Town administrator Aaron Stine started it. I think when Brett was in the acting role, continued it and then I don't know if town administrator Marlon finished it, I think, but I think it was approved.
Okay.
During that, as or in some combination of that.
Okay, so was, the, the reason I ask is, was this item on the agenda because of that or?
No, this was, this was this came out of, everything here came out of the strategic plan.
Yeah, but we didn't put it in the strategic plan because the town was worked.
Town administrator Aaron Stine was on that committee. So that could have been feedback from her as well. I don't know.
I don't recall this, but that, it's okay. The, the reason I ask is that if the town was anticipating this happening sooner, but I don't see us being able to do it sooner anyway. Yeah, so. Okay. The, the next thing is the connect with the media program at the high school and cable to collaborate on video.
I feel like that appears in other areas of the roadmap as well. And I, that should probably appear. I mean, we might be able to combine that with some of the other things and have it show up each year as the there's like FY23 is partner with media program at high school for content creation, production. I think there's another separate cable century. So more video presence. There, I think there are ways to combine.
Yeah, okay.
Explore fundraising and funding opportunities with friends or ambassadors.
If you want to continue, we don't want to lose that. We'll be ready for that time. Inventory the collection for potential storage items versus easy retrieval.
So that would be if we had items off site. If we needed that in the future.
Okay. I think that's fine. Keep it. That's a key. Charter, new library building committee. Engage library stakeholders and philanthropy capital campaign. Define how library project is funded. And these are all important out year things. Wouldn't want to lose in FY25. I think so. Yeah, I think, I think the out years are easy because we can always come back to them in a year or two and say, wow. Yeah, we're going to push that off to FY26 or something.
These are the things we got done this year.
Yeah.
Just going to stick it in the next one.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we we don't want to lose these right now. We don't want to kick anything out. So.
So I can
Thank you.
Prepare that.
Alright.
In a more readable.
Yeah. We can revisit that. Okay. Next item is the personnel review of the library director. So process here that we've used in the past. So this is, I just wanted to get this review year right. This is 2022?
Yeah.
Okay. And the date of the mid-year review is today. Or.
No, I, I have July 2022.
You have down here review year 2022 for 2021.
Right. And then a mid-year review, probably because we're so late in doing this, it should probably be a little bit later.
That's, that's why I'm like I didn't put in the dates.
Six months from now is October. And then we're, I mean, I'm off, I'm off.
Yeah, it is October because I just have
Yeah.
An appointment at LAHE and it said six months and it's October.
So I'm off cycle though, because I think the rest of the town does this in January.
Right. So this is not the
This is just the regular review.
This is not the mid-year review.
No.
Oh, that's why I was, okay.
Sorry.
This is not the one we should have done in January.
Right.
This is the one we should have.
No, this is the one we should have done in January.
Okay.
But then you put the date in the mid-years for.
July, assuming that, yeah.
So the one we should have done in January, January. Was, but that was the annual review or the mid-year?
That's annual.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I saw that too. And I was like, maybe she meant.
Yeah, that's right. All right. So now we're going to change the date of the year review to October. Do you collect these?
Um.
Individual score sheets?
I can, or I, I did a blank one to whoever.
Yeah, I think what we usually do is we, we just, I think what we've done in the past, just for, for readers benefit is we've, we've just gone around, done our scores. And then
We average them.
Average them or come to consensus, well, the consensus score. So we'll, we'll go one at a time. And we'll also offer comments, but why don't we start with? All right, how do we start this? Well, thank you, Jocelyn, for all you do for the library and for providing your self-assessment, which we've, we've all looked at and I appreciate your thoughtful comments on your self-assessment is always challenging. So appreciate you taking the time to do this. And so now we'll do the trustee's assessment. And it will invite you also to comment. I'm just trying to think of a process here. So we'll pick what we'll do as well. Gather the scores from trustees and then while the discussion and invite your, your comments. I'd teach your foes and we'll have a discussion and consensus score. So why don't we start with the, the first item is job knowledge and skills. And remembering that the, the scale is one to five with five being excellent. I'll go first on this one and I'll, I, I put 4.5. Thank you, Jocelyn, for opening the door to having half point scores.
Yeah, I can't make.
So Rita? From store.
I'd say 4.5 too.
Okay.
Didn't realize we could get a point. Yeah, me too. So.
Confessors score that is 4.5. I just, you know.
I have no comment.
My, my comment, my comment is here, Jocelyn, is that you make the work of library trustees easy by effectively managing the day-to-day responsibilities and you work from a strong foundation of knowledge and responsibilities of a library director. That's, you know, key here is you, you know, the job. And you do. And so, and you work based upon that knowledge and we, and you build on the knowledge from attending trainings and consulting with other library directors and MBLC. And, you know, you've been doing this for a long, long time. You, you know how it all works and you continue to, to grow in your knowledge and keep up to date. So 4.5 is just use a little bit of a bar to quality of work. I'm sorry. Did anybody else have any comments related to that? Quality of work. I will start with.
I give four. I think you shortchanged yourself. So.
I gave her four. Awesome.
You did 4.5? Okay. I, I can go with four. It's, it's it's an improvement over what Jocelyn put herself, like just the, the rule of thumb has been historically to take Jocelyn's score and realize that she's
Shortchanging.
Shortchanging herself.
Overly critical.
Yes. No, no, I, I feel like.
Honest of some, but you're overly critical. Yeah.
Considering the situation, considering.
That's all I kept thinking. Like what, what's going on? And you always have the answers and you always have an explanation. You're always thinking about something.
Well.
Personality.
Also. Which is very wise and strategic because you realize that she had put fives for all of these. We got so yeah, what is it matter?
No, I, I, I don't.
It's good. Self-reflection is important. Self-reflection is important.
No, I see where I feel very up and down. Things go.
My comment here was you continue to produce quality work in an exceptionally challenging environment. This particular evaluation here. So always challenging, isn't it?
It seems.
Make sure the challenges may change. It's just make sure the challenges may change, but.
The challenges have reached their five because I I just, I couldn't imagine being two years into all this and
Yeah.
you know, trying to rebuild and.
Okay, so move on to planning and organization. Rita.
Uh, I have four.
I have five.
I have four point five. I can go four point five.
Four point five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we can.
Does anyone complain and organize of all this going on?
Alright. Then next is teamwork and attitude. I guess back to me, four point five.
Hey, that's what I have, same, I stuck with that.
Four point five.
Yourself then. I think that can be a strong point.
Again, just for for the public record, the the reason for this is that you've been an exceptional performer, this this is my own personal exceptional performer in a challenging environment has led the public library team effectively in transition to an adjustment to temporary space, that's not an easy task for for anybody and you know, it's that's important.
Can you still remain positive, like, you're still trying to find ways to make this work, I wish you try this, we should try that. I mean, it's always trying to make sure you can get the services to people, so.
Okay, next is dependability, always, so who do we go, I was about to read my notes here. I think it's E.
I just said before, she gave us some thoughts for for the same for.
For, okay, I'll go with four, five and four. I I my own commentators, you're always on top of tasks, and you set a high standard for meeting deadlines, which means that moving the goalposts for you is is not acceptable, but for me, it is, I I know you hold, so that's why the high standards, like, this was due, I'm sorry it's late and it's okay, there's a lot of things that get in the way, and so the meets deadline piece is you try your hardest to to meet deadlines and when you miss them, you're aware that you missed them, but deadlines are just goalposts that sometimes could be moved. Keep in mind that this is being recorded, so. You know what I mean?
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot of flexibility, certain deadlines that you absolutely need and you do.
Others.
Yeah, there are deadlines that are actually self imposed, self imposed, your own self imposed deadlines, and you don't meet them, you that's, okay. Independent initiative. Who's next? Rita.
I think you're five.
Five.
Just feel like this is the place where I've done the best out of all these categories.
Yeah, you appropriately did score yourself very high there. I so my comment is that they, you're you're a consistent performer who has proven that your past approaches to to your work has provided a solid foundation for the challenges of the past few years, COVID nineteen and the closure of the Main Street Building, so, you know, you said you're, you haven't is my message here is you prepared yourself well. And and that's that shows, you know, that your work over the years prior to these last couple of years on have prepared you well, and that's that's why you get a five, you're just outstanding here. Okay, who next one is leadership and managerial effectiveness, is that me, four point five?
Four.
Four.
Four point.
Four point five?
I'm trying.
Four point five? Anybody want to share their comments, I'm sorry, I've been sharing mine and welcome anybody else to share whatever they've written and take the time to do that.
Well, for an example, the other day I went over to the module unit and Jocelyn was over here with Laurie. So, you know, you make the effort of making sure everybody's doing okay and checking out with everybody and, you know. I I think they have, you know, they respect you and, you know, feel comfortable with you, so. You're the leader. Take me to be a leader. And I can comment as well, when you wanted to change the hours or where people are working to make sure they're feeling like comfortable with where they were and trying to keep everyone happy and still effectively run the library, so that was a great example of leadership and and, you know, collaboration and stuff.
And I think that's all driven by commitment to the library as an important community resource. And, you know, you hold that that's a standard that's unchangeable and you're driven by that and the staff see that and they they act in the same way, you you look at what staff do. Or, you know, across the board, they all hold that commitment to the library as a community resource, and that's why they're there. Okay. Number eight is goals.
These are from midyear. So I got two of them done. And two of them.
Okay, so goal one is the draft of the marketing plan that has not been completed. The community preservation committee draft is no longer applicable.
It's not because it was centered on three ninety five Main Street.
Yeah.
And that building is really out of our hands, like, so.
Okay. The collection development policy was completed. And the inventory of annual reports was completed, so you get two out of possible four points there.
And I just want to say Lisa was instrumental.
Great, sure. All right, then. And you'll just tally these scores.
Yeah.
You had a, you had self assessment score thirty. Our our trustee's score exceeds that by a few points, a few points.
Thirty four.
You totaled it thirty four, that's what I had, so, yeah. Um, so last item is goals for upcoming review period. So Jocelyn, you had the whole staff training day.
Yeah, the board approved a training day in the fall and it just never, there was just not, you were adapting too much.
Sure, yeah.
So I'd like to have that.
And then the also to develop a robust training for online resources.
Yeah, with integrating it with I've been having programs that feature some of our online resources and do a little bit more of that. Getting up, maybe having a little show on cable or putting something on YouTube there, you know, we have a product that has a lot of tutorials as well, but to have a two-pronged approach of marketing by showing what you can do with some of this stuff.
Okay, do do we have goals? As trustees. I guess, but the only thing that comes to mind is a strategic plan is just revisiting that, taking it up, the work that we've done, summarize the work that we've done, so.
We're helping by laws.
Working on bylaws, reviewing bylaws.
They haven't been reviewed in a while.
Yeah. Alright. That's good, buddy, anything else, otherwise we'll just, I think that's fine. Um, so do we vote, is that, we vote on this evaluation, is that what we have to do?
Remember.
Well, I guess we can, we don't vote.
I don't remember.
Don't remember, probably, we probably, we probably should, just can't hurt to vote, and but if we we didn't vote, any other other department heads don't have a committee or trustee, right?
So.
So they they have.
They have Mike.
Mike, yeah, so we should as the, just vote. So may I have a motion to approve the performance evaluation for Jocelyn, so various library director.
I make a motion to approve, goodbye. I second Rita Russia.
Okay, any more discussion of the evaluation? Comment this, thank you, Jocelyn, for all the incredibly important work that you do and doing it so well and particularly in a challenging year.
Thank you for supporting me and the staff and the library.
Okay. Make it easy, so. All, we'll take a vote then, Ron O'Connor, I.
Rita Russia, I.
Someday I'll figure out whether the chair is supposed to vote first or last. Last, in case it's.
Unless there's a tie, maybe you have a tie.
Probably last if it's a tie, but I've never been in a position where we had to walk that fence, so, all right, well, thank you. Anything else on the agenda, I did just have one thing. Is that, is that all on the posted agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you.
I just, yeah. Just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for your many years of service as a trustee.
I feel that I'm reading now and we're moving.
Yeah, well, we're, you know, we're making this work. And so so thank you, thank you for, it's been a pleasure working with you and being a.
It's been a pleasure.
Yeah.
And who knows, another day.
Yeah.
Time, you'll be back.
Oh, there's a target.
Well, it's always a it's always opportunities to to share your wisdom and input on the the work of the library, so that's always welcome, but also wish you the best and whatever, whatever other
To see what happens.
You do with your with this hour a month.
Yeah, I'm trying to pay, but, you know.
Yeah, another committee, so another committees for school.
Thank you, alright. So I have a motion to adjourn.
Rita Russia, I make motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Um, we'll vote.
Rita Russia, I.
Don't have to break the tie here.
Thank you.
I left the door open for you, you've just had a tie for me to break.
No, I wanted, no.
Been a bit late.